Falling to order, the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee meeting one thousand six hundred and fifty-four as amended on Thursday, September 7th, 2023 at, I'll say 6:00 PM. And we are meeting in the elementary student cafeteria. Do we or do we not have, I don't think we have an executive session.
We do now.
Okay. Which, we have the approval of school committee minutes.
Move to approval minutes.
Thank you, Carl. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second from Kim. Any comments? Oh, yes.
I just did a quick one. I think it was at nine. It's minor, but it says that something to the effect that the vote for the agreement is on, is, will be on 10/23/23. And I think it should say planned on being, or something like that, because it's not going to be on 10/23.
Okay.
Beth? Well, I think the statement was that Great Barrington has stated that they were doing it on October 23rd, which I do think they did state.
They did.
But...
Yeah, that is what they said. I think it just...
So if it wasn't, I mean, we're not saying it, but...
Okay, got it. Beth? Okay. Any other comments? See none. Let's take a vote. Nancy? David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Abstain.
Okay. Art?
Abstain.
Kim?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we have two abstentions and the rest are yes, so therefore it's approved. Okay. Enrollment.
Okay. So in your packets on 3B are a bunch of extensive enrollment reports. So the 9-1 enrollment, remember the 10-1 enrollment is the one that drives a lot of the reports and the budgets, but as of 9-1, we're at 6:13, which is what we ended with in June. On the next page, it shows students who transferred out of district, what grade and where they went. So that's who we know. We don't always know where people have gone or what the movement looks like. The following page shows the number of students we took in. So you'd think we'd be seeing a much larger difference because we took in 68 students since the last report in June. Twenty-seven have gone out. However, our numbers are the same. So I said to Lynette, "Help me." However, the page, the two pages with all the color on them try to show that we graduated a larger class, the bookends in the secondary are smaller class sizes. So you can't make an exact match, just so you know. So if you want to spend your time trying to create this jigsaw puzzle of joy, but we've tried to give you as much information as we have at this moment, there's still movement. But the numbers as of September 1 are the same as they were on June 23 at 6:13, which is good news.
Do we have any questions? Thank you very much to you and to Lynette for trying to decipher this. I like that we're moving on. Did you receive any miscellaneous correspondence?
I did not.
By the way.
Do I? Do you recognize him?
I, I was...
You, you and Beth and Lynette received a request from me for miscellaneous correspondence.
Yes, I responded to you.
You responded. You said you'd bring it up with Beth.
Right. But then I responded to you that it doesn't fit into miscellaneous correspondence.
In what way?
Because miscellaneous correspondence is for correspondence that comes in to address the full school committee or the superintendent. So we don't, we, I think you can bring up a lot of what you want to when we do an eight-town regional agreement, but the follow-up email that I sent you...
Which I didn't see.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That it didn't really fit into miscellaneous correspondence.
So, so we have somewhere in our documents a definition of what constitutes miscellaneous correspondence. Where is that?
It's where we put together our agenda.
Pardon me?
In the, how we assemble the agenda in our...
So there's a definition of what constitutes miscellaneous correspondence and what correspondence is neither miscellaneous nor appropriate to me?
I don't know if it's fully specific, but it is usually addressed to the full school committee that couldn't have been anticipated in time. And then typically it's not discussed. It's just in the packet.
Stated.
So we're thinking that it would be a better, because you could bring it up down there and be discussed. See what I'm saying?
I don't, but okay.
Right. Because you wouldn't discuss it in miscellaneous correspondence necessarily.
Do we have student representative report?
Not yet, because the elections haven't happened yet.
Okay.
But we do have student spotlight.
Student spotlight.
Can you give me, can you go to the next item?
Can I go to the next?
Student timeline.
Sure can.
Public comment.
Can I get in here? A little behind, but I'm getting it.
Okay.
Fine, if I don't get any of this on camera, right? Okay.
Public comment. Anybody out there for public comment? Okay. I know Renee had said she wanted to say... No? Okay. And we don't have anyone zooming in with public comment. In that case, let's, business managers report? Do we have?
Move to approve the warrants.
Well, we're going to let him at least introduce.
Oh, I didn't know. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Yes, we have a little longer list of warrants this time. Some of them just going back into the end of FY '23, but nothing unusual with any of these. We just have a little detail of what the Florida, just expenses are at the, on the right-hand side of every warrant. I can certainly answer any questions anyone has, but this is pretty straightforward.
I renew my motion to approve the warrants.
Okay. We have a second on that.
Kim is seconding it.
Okay. Any further discussion? In that case, we will start...
Nancy. Yes.
Okay. Nancy? David?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And me. You're having this. Okay. Warrants are approved. Anything else for us, sir?
Thank you. No, I will have transfers for you at the next meeting. I have nothing else tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Business with district member towns update on regional school district planning board. So, and there are a number of moving parts at this point. The regional school district planning board is in the process of scheduling the second vote on the regional agreement. So that date has not yet been set, but it looks like it will take place later this month. And when that vote takes place, if it is positive for a merger, we then move ahead with all the follow-up activities stating that the regional planning board has approved the new regional agreement. Did you want to say something, Carl?
Well, I do, but I'll yield to both Dennis and Kim.
Okay. Kim?
Is it approved or is it recommended? Because they recommend it to the towns, you recommend it.
Right. So we approve it, so that it can then go to the towns.
Okay. So we approve it, so they recommend it.
And the towns will then vote upon it.
So at this point, there is no eight-town agreement?
Correct. Correct. It is waiting for...
Desi's approval.
Well, also for the vote of the regional planning board. Okay.
Now you have Dennis.
And now Dennis.
So it comes to us first, then we agree upon it?
It comes to the, the 24 members of the regional planning board to take a second vote.
Oh, okay.
If the, if at that meeting...
It doesn't come to us?
No. If at that meeting, the regional planning board approves the merger, then there are a number of steps that follow in order to have this going to effect, which is the new regional agreement for a new district. And there are numerous steps involved in that. Also, it's, the process is such that Desi is still reviewing a number of items in the regional agreement. So there are little tweaks that take place on the regional agreement, in the regional agreement.
Do they have a due date when they can affect release it to us then?
After the approval by the regional planning board, it then will be, the new regional agreement will be widely circulated along with the steps that are to take place, including the necessary hearings and whether the tentative date of October 23 for all eight towns to vote will still be in place, or will another date have to be picked? And a lot of it does have to do if there's anything that Desi is noting that requires more than a new comma.
So it comes to us, then it goes to Desi?
No, no, no.
But Desi has to, in effect...
No. Desi, Desi has to approve everything in the new regional agreement.
Okay.
Before the 24 members of the planning board can vote.
Oh, okay.
So basically, it's Lucy and Jake who are back and forth with Desi, and most of the changes are, have been minor. So that's, that's the status. And then we'll go into, and we'll hear from community outreach, some of the suggestions of how we're going to get, that was me, I don't know why it's supposed to be off, but that will take place over the coming weeks. So it's, it's going to be a lot of juggling.
Good.
That will take place. And tomorrow, if anybody's interested, at 3:30 is the wonderful community outreach meeting of the regional planning board. You could zoom in to that. Yes, Kim?
So basically, they didn't have an agreement accepted by Desi when they took the original vote? And we have to wait for Desi to approve it to take a secondary vote?
There was always to be two votes.
Okay.
So that didn't happen because of Desi.
Okay.
There was a preliminary vote, and it was, it's two, it's moving parts. So each time Desi looks, if there's a question, but no matter what, there was always to be two votes. Other questions? Yes, Carl?
Since my miscellaneous correspondence was not deemed...
Miscellaneous, no.
Miscellaneous correspondence within the, someone's definition of the term. So is it now appropriate, since my, to, to ask that that correspondence, which I've sent to you, to the superintendent and to Lynette Gagnon, does it go here on the...
Yes. Is...
Okay.
You can talk about it. And also, if you wanted to recommend that it be distributed to all members of the school committee, this is a place where you could make that recommendation.
Uh, yeah. I do, I would like it to be attached as an item offered, which there is, which, at the, there always is, at the end of each minutes, for example, right at the end, documents presented at this meeting. I'd like that to be a document presented at this meeting.
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
All right. Carl is referring to a document that only half of us received, those of us who are on the regional planning board, and...
When did that come in, Carl?
Uh, it...
Are we talking about warrants?
Pardon me?
Warrants? That Jake sent out?
No, no, no. No. This was a response by Jake Heberwine to, this is, this is his viewpoint, and whether it's mine or not is not important for purposes of this, responding to certain, what he believes were erroneous statements made.
Oh, I saw that. Yeah. Yes.
And it should have been, it should have been received by five of us, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes, I did get that.
And so the other five, and I think the other five should see it. Well, I think everybody should see it, but...
Yeah. So this is a response to September 28th meeting of all the select boards.
Yes.
Thank you. August 28th meeting of all the select boards and the finance meeting. That was a packed meeting at the senior center in Sheffield. And as Carl mentioned, Jake then responded in, to what he considers to be errors in some of the things that were stated. So I think Carl bringing it up this way will attach it and everybody, but I think since the minutes take longer to come, I think we should send that, my recommendation is that we send that out now and not wait for the minutes, so that the other five can say it.
He's asking if it's attached to this, this. I didn't receive it either.
It's only going to five, which means that any one of us, any one of us can send it, because we're not sending it to a court.
Right.
But it seems to me that in the interest of being overly cautious, Lynette or Beth should send it, so a non-member committee should send it.
I'm going to have to be added to that list. For some reason, it doesn't sound to me.
Oh.
I just looked through all my emails.
It was a Sunday night at late.
Yeah.
On a holiday weekend.
Okay. So we're agreeing that...
I got one and something else that I'm not...
So we're bringing that, Beth, Lynette out, it will go to, why don't we just send it out?
She's going to send it to, she'll send it to the whole committee?
Yeah. That way we know it's there. Okay.
Do you want to do the spotlight? I have the spotlight now. Do you want to do that?
Oh, wonderful.
Do you want to?
Do I?
Sure.
All I got is one.
Where do I need to stand?
Just where everybody...
Wherever you like. I can hear you wherever you are.
Okay. So what we had, so over the summer, the Agony team has a bunch of retreats, and in our, one of our August retreats, Beth talked about the need to start the year with more student voice, for a variety of reasons, besides the fact that it's obviously best practice. And so we sat around and we thought, how can we infuse our opening days with more student voice? And, you know, without giving you too much boring detail, what we next did was we solicited families both in secondary and in elementary to introduce the school year. And what we landed on, just to give it some kind of framework, was that we would ask the students three questions. And the three questions were, first, what are you excited about with the new school year approaching? This is, you know, the dog days of summer. Number two, what do you love the most about the staff and teachers at Southern Berkshire Regional School District? And number three, this is the most important question, if you had to choose one substitute teacher between LeBron James, Taylor Swift, and Harry Potter, who would you choose?
I love the first one.
Is that right? Okay. Enjoy. Here you go.
And we just want to spell forward correctly.
Sorry.
I'm starting off a new year as a freshman and...
Hang on, one second. Just got to change the, the audio on that to the, so it's not in your ears very much. Should come out of there.
Very scary and very nerve-wracking, but I am very excited to get back into school and I'll be very excited to see my friends again and to make new connections and explore my academic career, able to take new classes, exploring different subjects, being able to have the freedom of high school, I think is very exciting, in my opinion.
My favorite part about returning back to school is having all the friends in one place.
Lunch. Especially pizza. I'm just kidding. I'm really excited to see all my favorite teachers.
I'm looking forward to meeting my new teachers and seeing my old friends.
Stayed to see my friends and all my teachers.
The thing I'm most looking forward to about school is playing with my friends.
I'm mostly excited to start sports again.
Slime.
Seeing my friends and new teachers.
I'm most excited for my new college classes that we have. I'm taking three, so they could be cool.
Probably being able to do morning meetings.
I'm most excited for my internship at this.
My new teacher.
See my friends again.
I'm most excited to explore new opportunities that'll help me when I graduate.
The faculty and staff here is amazing, and they love to help everyone. They go out of their way every day, not only like with your schoolwork, but like any other time with mental, anything that you really need help with, they will be there.
Wendy, dear sweet, special treats.
My favorite part of the teachers is that they're all very kind.
I love that all the staff has constant encouragement for all the students.
They're nice.
Something I like about the faculty and the library is their ability to make a school environment very comforting and very welcoming. I personally find it easy to turn to a teacher if I'm struggling academically or if I just need somebody to talk to. They're very open and very welcoming to your needs and to your wants. It's a very, very safe environment to be in. And personally, I've struggled with learning in the past, so being able to feel comfortable in a classroom is very, very nice. And it takes, it puts the fun in learning, and it's less of a burden, in my opinion.
When they help me when I'm stuck.
They just personally help their students and make success.
Well, they, they always help people. They're very kind, and they help us learn new things.
I like how friendly they are, and I never feel like an outsider when talking to a teacher about something.
I love that all the staff and faculty go out of their way to make sure the students are doing okay.
I love how connected we are and how they'll always reach out to help you.
I like how they take time and try to connect with their students.
I just don't know. It's hard to explain.
What do you love most about the faculty and teachers and staff at your school?
What does Tommy?
I pick Harry Potter because he's magical.
Taylor Swift.
Probably Taylor Swift.
Harry Potter.
Take 110. And wait.
Trying to focus at the end. All right, I think it speaks for itself.
Wow. It does. Thank you.
I think the nicest part about it was, this was, you know, it's been tough after the pandemic and coming back to school, and, and there's a lot of people who are still struggling. And we wanted teachers to understand how important they are to our kids. That was the point. So I think this did it really nicely.
Did the faculty get to see this?
This was opening day.
This was on the...
Well, that's why I've been worried.
That's why I said I've seen this. I've seen this.
But this, that was the point of it, is so that they could just appreciate how much they mean to our students, and I thought that was very special.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay. Chairman's report.
Can we go back to the seven, the eight-town thing? I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So when do our school district vote to dissolve the original, regional agreement before we start into a new regional agreement?
So that is one of the steps that our attorneys have gone through in terms of what's stated in the warrant and what has to be followed. So there still are a couple of tweaks in terms of getting agreement as to this, what currently exists, is it's a 10-month period for the closing of a school. So you say that you want to...
No, he's talking about...
Close a school.
No, he's talking about solving the agreement.
If you're in a position of having one of the towns decide that they don't want to be part of this agreement, so that would mean a town, if October 23 is the day, it's by majority vote. So let's say, let's say Sheffield turns down the regional agreement. The question comes of what exists as a district? That, that's still one of the open issues, because we could have, out of the eight towns, six of them say, yes, we want it. And then we have two who say, no, we're turning it down. So that's part of the list of issues that have been coming up and working on. Go ahead, Art.
No, I'm talking about our five-town, which is one agreement.
Yes.
This is, this has to be voted on...
Right.
To dissolve our...
There is nothing in our regional agreement, or in Berkshire Hills regional agreement, that speaks to the dissolution of the entire district. So that's part of the language that you will see will come from Desi and the lawyers as to the steps that need to be taken. What they've written in the warrant is that if it is, if the warrant is accepted, it means, with the date of the acceptance, they put them in the dates, the old districts will cease to exist, Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire. So it's sort of going around what is in our regional agreement and in Berkshire Hills regional agreement. So people will, if people vote for the warrant, they're voting for, and if it is accepted... they're voting for, and if it is accepted, that the school, the current two districts will disappear and become the new Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District. Okay, all right, Kyle?
I was curious. I mean, I've read the regional agreement, but not super in-depth. But is there reference to a six-town regional agreement? Or a seven-town regional agreement or a five-town regional agreement? So I'd assume every town then has to vote in the affirmative.
If every town doesn't, the end of the warrant basically says that it goes back to it being Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills. So there isn't a provision in the warrant or in the regional agreement to have another configuration. So if it goes down in any one town, that's the end of it. Okay, Kim?
I was just going to say that you said if six out of, or seven out of eight voted and stuff like that. But it's our five towns that we have to worry about. Now, if the three vote in the other district, we have to worry about what our five towns say.
It's all, it could, it could just be West Stockbridge that, that trashes the whole thing.
Right. But it, but that's part of, that trashes their, I, I get that part. But my point is they have their school district, three towns voting. We have our school district, five towns voting. And I guess it's like, I, I don't know. I just, it doesn't matter how those three towns vote, they say yes. And you said if Sheffield um, votes no, and it tanks, I agree.
Right.
But...
If West Stockbridge, if, if...
No, I agree. I guess it's the way you said it and it sounded like it's like, okay. But it really doesn't matter. If one tanks in.
One tanks in.
Okay.
Any one town where it loses by even one vote, that's the end of it.
No, it won't be, but that's okay.
But there's ways, you have, there's certain procedures they have to follow in order to withdraw from the school district if a town decides to leave. It's not easy.
Kim?
Jim?
No, I'm...
Carl?
Carl?
Carl. To, to mostly, I think, answer Art's question. Um, generally, when something like that happens, when two corporations, two entities merge, the, by operation of law, the prior agreements just disappear. That's what almost certainly, unless Desi has special rules on this, almost certainly what will happen if all eight towns approve the new school district, the regional agreement for Southern Berkshire and the regional agreement for Berkshire Hills will be, will just simply won't exist. Okay. You can use them to light your cigars.
Were you going to add?
Well, I just, I think there's a question and I don't know, there's a question out there as whether or not there would be special legislation necessary about the proposed dissolution of either one of the agreements. Because currently, in our regional agreement, there is a withdrawal requirement. So, you know, do we have a dissolution built in? Is there special legislation that's been passed? Or how would we go about, because otherwise it wouldn't be something that would have to withdraw. We have a current hot way of...
But, but yeah, may I, may I respond to what Beth's come? If, we're only talking about what happens in the event that all eight towns approve the merger, for want of a better term, or whatever we call it, but it is a merger, that will not, then there will no longer be an issue, or there may be an issue. I mean, it would, it's hard to imagine a town wishing to withdraw after having voted approval for the new district. But just if, if everybody, if all eight towns approve the district, the, the regional agreements for, for defunct organizations just cease to exist. That doesn't cover what happened. Yes, there are, of course, other possibilities. A town could seek to withdraw. They could have second thoughts and they could have a special town meeting and seek withdrawal. And then they have to go through the whole procedure that's outlaw, outlined in, in the MGM. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Exactly. The other thing I wanted... Um, what I've been calling Sheffield in celebration is now the Sheffield Fair. So um, I have I have a, a table. I have a table at this Saturday's Sheffield Fair for the district. So last year, I just was manning the information booth and I happened to be wearing one of my many t-shirts. And people were coming up and asking about the district. So, and previously, Chris had had robotics at the Sheffield Fair. So um, I have a table and I already know I have some soccer kids, some honor society kids joining me. Jim said he would be there at 10:30. If anybody wants to give an hour or so, it's from 11:00 to 4:00 at the Sheffield Town Park. It is not just Sheffield. There are people come from all over and they come with loads of kids because there are now um, many, many children's activities in addition to the animals and all. And it's just um, an opportunity to talk about our programs and what exists in our school district. And Beth's garnering up some freebies, a little bit of swag to give out. And it should be fun and I'm really, you know, hoping that we get a lot of people who will come by. So please, if you have an hour at any point, bring your kids with you. It's, it's fun. It's, except for the kids who all want to go play with the snakes. That part I'm not about.
That's a nope.
So, yeah. And if you're coming and all, this is not a discussion about merger or anything else. The idea is to present Southern Berkshire's programs and the great district that we are. That's my report. Superintendent Brigado, you don't have...
Sure. So I wanted to share with the committee that we did submit um, a request for the ARPA funds to the town of Sheffield by the deadline.
Incredible.
And it really turned out to be what we think is a really thoughtful and important um, request. If, if other towns do have ARPA funds availability, we'd be happy to, to send um, send the same proposal to other communities. But what we did is we put out a survey to our families and our students. And we had 228 responses, which I thought was great. And the number one um, request was that we had um, mental health and social emotional supports. That was the number one request. Number two was STEM or STEAM, STEAM, activities. And number three was academic um, or some increased tutoring opportunities.
What was number two then?
STEAM. Yeah. So um, taking all that into account and taking the feedback, we came up with the idea of developing an after-school resource center which would provide um, direct or group counseling for students in need, would provide um, specific tutoring help based on um, whatever, whatever students were presented or of interest. It also had um, some after-school um, hands-on, um, project-based learning components to it. We proposed working with the community partners that we already work with and just having the center be available from three to five every day. Or did we start with three days? I think we started with three days a week. So anyway, that was in our grades three through 12. I'm doing this all from memory because my desk was a tornado, so all of this is from memory. But anyway, I thought it was a really thoughtful um, proposal and it came directly from our community, which I think gives it um, important weight. So anyway, that was what we did for our ARPA grant submission. Our opening days, I think, were great. I think the students were great. It's so incredible to have people back in the building. There is a barely, there's a ton of energy, mostly positive energy. I, I have done lunch duty myself. I have been in every single classroom across the district. Um, I have had lots of wonderful interactions with students, whether it's in my office, somewhat near my candy jar, or in the hallway. But everybody seems really happy to be here and really excited about what we have going on in the district. It's incredibly busy. We had um, the kickoff of all of our organizations. The Transend Grant work is, is starting next week. We've done our fire drill. We've done our professional development. You name it. So on the opening day, we had Bill Daggett, who's a national speaker, join us. And um, I think his presentation was incredibly well-received. It had to do with AI and innovative educational practices. And since then, he has been wonderful with connecting myself and other administrators with different rural school leaders, innovative rural school leaders across the country. I already had a meeting with a gentleman who um, created some rural programming in Texas and um, shared what we are doing here and he just was thrilled with that. So hopefully, we're going to be able to collaborate and add in some more people to the discussion. The principals and I have a meeting. And I think Bonnie was asked to join that one next week. So there's a lot of opportunities and a lot of new ideas and ways that we can all learn from each other and expand what we're already doing. So that was wonderful. As I said in my, in the last subcommittee meeting, my plan is to have a weekly communication from myself to the three different levels on Monday. So I'll communicate with the school committee, with faculty and staff, and with families every Monday with things going on. That's my goal, so wish me luck. And also, I'm really excited about the creation of three student advisory committees that are going to work directly with me, one at the high school level, one at the middle school level, and the elementary level. And we're in the process of figuring out how we're going to um, gather those who would like to participate and be part of those committees. So I have had people who just opened my door and said, hey, I need to talk to you this week. And I thought, okay, sit down. So we've, we've had those types of discussions and I'm grateful that our students feel that they can do that at any time. They just knock on the door and feel like they can come down and ask, ask for some advice. So I hope to have more of that.
I have a question for the superintendent. Are you finished with your...
I am.
Okay. I, I, I know that the committee has already approved the student handbook. And I, and you know, of course, that I submitted some suggestions to post-approval, which I was invited to do. We all were invited to do that at the last meeting.
Correct.
And I'm not going to go through all, any but one of them that I have that I think is important. Particularly in light of a controversy that I got involved in on behalf of a student, a homeschooled student last, it was either May or June. It was recently, within the last few months. And a misrepresentation of school policy, and I'm being kind by calling it a misrepresentation rather than what it actually was, was made to this homeschooled student that he could not attend prom as per school policy, her exact words. It's not per school policy. And policy is contained in the student parent handbook or policy as determined by the school committee on advice of the policy subcommittee.
Excuse me? This isn't relative right now.
You mean it's not relevant right now? I don't see why not.
Because that's her report. She didn't ask for questions or get in a deliberation about something else.
So, so you...
What is it that you want in this?
I think that it should be made clear in the handbook, which it is not, that, that homeschooled students will not be allowed to attend prom events. Simply that. That's, if that's the policy, it should be stated there.
I think if anyone, as Carl and we were all invited to, if anyone has any comments in terms of handbook, it's appropriate to let the superintendent know and she will then refer...
That's all I'm asking.
I, I am responding. You just gave them to me yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no.
I drafted half of them and then you had a continuation, so they will, but I will add this.
No, I'm not being, I'm not being critical. I just think it, it, it's important that, that there be that kind of transparency so that homeschooled students know where they stand.
Well, if they can attend as guests, the way you're stating is...
I didn't say that wasn't the case.
The way you're stating it, it sounds like they cannot attend at all.
No, that's not what I said either. I mean, you may wish to put words in my mouth.
No, I'm just saying, you said in the book that homeschooled students could not attend prom.
It doesn't say anything about...
No, but you just said that. That was my point.
We have, Beth is addressing it. We have a procedure in place for that. Any other comments on the superintendent's report? All right, curriculum, professional development?
No report this evening.
All right. Sandy?
Hi. Good evening. I did put a report in your packets and I just wanted to address a couple of pieces of this, unless there's any questions, and then I have something else to go over. Pre-kindergarten started on Tuesday and I believe I've seen some numbers going around and I just wanted to clarify what our numbers currently are as of when I wrote this and as of today. We have 63 students enrolled in our six classrooms as of this very moment. We have set a number of 12 for each of our classrooms and that's based on the size of the rooms, the level of support that we need. We're still working on some certain skills at age three and four. So, you know, our hope is that we have space for 72, which is what we have. But I want you to know that all throughout the year, we get referrals from the Pediatric Development Center, which is the birth of three. So I already have an idea of how many students are going to be referred and we already have some students that have been referred and we're going to be having meetings on over the next few weeks. So I anticipate, just based on those numbers, that without anybody else enrolling, that we'd be around 70 probably by January or February. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. They do get enrolled through our offices at the elementary and we had another enrollee this week. So those numbers are always changing. But just to clarify for everybody, there are 63 in our six pre-kindergarten classrooms, which are at New Marlboro, South Egrimah, and Undermilk. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'm happy to...
What's, what is the basis for getting referrals?
So students, young children who receive services through the Pediatric Development Center, who are turning usually about two and a half. We start to get referrals and know that they're, that they might have a need and that we're going to need to explore it and work with the Pediatric Development Center to develop a plan for them to enroll potentially.
And my other question is, are you able to tell over the past few years the number of students who start... of students who started out in our pre-K or the infant or whatever, will continue in our district?
Yes, and we're gathering that information. We've been, there's a lot of pieces to that, but we are gathering that information, so I can give you some data for that.
Because I had that as a question.
Okay.
Those questions.
I have a question on a different piece from the report you wrote.
Okay.
You said that there's going to be a vaccination.
Yes, I was going to do that next.
Okay. Well, my question is what vaccines are going to be offered?
So I can tell you exactly which vaccines are going to be available. Do you want me to talk about anything else related to the other question, then I will tell you.
I just had a question.
Sure.
When you receive these referrals, is it just for our town?
Yes, yes. It's only for our town. Yeah.
Do we tend to get children of that age from other towns?
We have had some demonstrated interest, and I think that's something that is on your agenda for this evening typically. If we expect to have space and there's siblings in the district, we have certainly entertained that, and you all have approved that in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When you mentioned that we had 63 this year.
Right now.
How many did we have last year?
I think at the end of the year, we had 67, I believe. I don't want to misspeak.
So it went down just a little bit.
Well, there's only space for 72.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's gone down. Right now, we're anticipating, I'm just going to tell you, we're seeing a lot of the young children who were born during COVID and weren't able to access services because they were doing virtual services for very young children right up until very recently. So we're getting referrals.
I was just trying to get a feel for whether it's something that's on the increase.
It's on the increase. It's on the increase, which is why our pre-kindergarten program is so important. I'm a speech pathologist by trade, and prevention is incredibly important for later success.
And also, just that we have, you, Beth told me that we have to hold certain slots.
Yes.
Because there are children who know.
Right.
Be moving from one program to another.
That's the PDC.
At their. You can explain it better.
Yeah, that's the referrals I was just talking about. Like, I know that the referrals are coming. Like, I know there's a child turning three in November.
Right.
Right. It's like, I already know that. And based on the information I've gotten from the Pediatric Development Center and all of those professionals, we anticipate that there was going to be a need to, and get them in the program.
So Dennis, at this point, last year, we were probably at the same number. At the end of last year, those referrals are what brought it.
Yes.
So we're anticipating getting to the same level.
Other questions about that?
This is just a point of interest.
Yes.
Are you finding a lot of children with speech delay?
Yes. I would say communication needs are the highest. And social.
Social.
Because they haven't had those opportunities in a typical way. Very much so. Okay, so to answer your question about, I was going to mention the vaccination clinics. You had the details there. You want to know which vaccines, of course, that new COVID vaccine is not released yet. They are not anticipating being able to have that. They will be having the flu vaccine, they will have the one that is currently available, the COVID vaccine that's currently available. And, let's see, flu. I think, I think I've told you everything that they're going to have available.
So then it's not going to be a full complement of the required vaccines, it's just going to be the.
It's not released yet. Right.
What would be involved with getting it possible to get all the required vaccines done? Children have to get it done anyway. Want to have just.
Oh, you mean all vaccines that children need as far as immunizations?
Right.
Okay.
Like T D A and such.
Yeah, I think many of those have to be done in doctor's offices. They can't be done in a, in a group setting like this, so they only offer the certain vaccinations. So it would be the flu, the Pfizer COVID vaccine is going to be available, and then as soon as the new COVID vaccine, everybody's hearing about that, is available, we're going to hold another clinic, unless something drastically changes before October 3rd.
There you go.
Okay, so those were, any other questions regarding my report? Those were the two things I was going to mention, vaccination clinics and pre-kindergarten numbers.
Do we have any sense of have there been increases in COVID?
I talked to Dr. Sylvia the other day, she's our school physician, and she said, yes, there has been an uptick in cases. A noticed, a noticeable uptick in cases over the past couple of weeks, is what she said.
However, there's no, the commissioner's office has not made any moves to revisit any of our former.
Right. She was just alerting us.
Yeah. But there's no change in protocol at this point.
No, those are all the same. I wanted to share this document with you, which is, it's in draft form, but it gives you some basic information that I think is incredibly important. We have been talking for the past few months with the Southern Berkshire Community Care Coordination Team, which includes Dr. Pacino, Nan Thompson, Mary Burley had joined us for a period of time, you see the names on top. What that organization is, it is the doctors and other health professionals that are in the area who want to work with us, which by the way, they already do in a more limited capacity. I talk with them all the time regarding students. But this is a more coordinated effort for those offices, pediatricians' offices, mental health professionals, et cetera, to discuss students that we are concerned about together. So the school and the doctors' offices have consent forms that they share with parents, and we feel like it's a positive thing in order for us to get together and discuss any needs that they may have, so that we can properly guide and provide services for the students. We have been doing this, like I said, in a much more limited capacity. There was a period of time when Dr. Pacino was at CHP or McInney, where we talked, you know, so incredibly often. They have family care coordinators in both offices now, at CHP and McInney. And if there is a concern about a student, we get a release and we discuss how to properly guide the parents and help the students. This is going to be a much more coordinated effort, and we have talked with the superintendent and the other administrators, and there's a memorandum of understanding that has been signed, how we can work together, and those meetings are just getting scheduled now. I wanted to share this information with you, and I'm going to say that probably two of the primary things that we're very concerned about are mental health needs slash social emotional needs, and attention, that comes up a lot, they're kind of comorbid, and of course, the academic needs and how they affect the students. So we're, my hope is that maybe at the next meeting or one of your upcoming meetings, that some of the folks from the Southern Berkshire Community Care Coordination could join us. I talked to Dr. Pacino, and I talked to Nan Thompson, and they're, they're willing to be a part of that discussion, and I even think Rochelle Walker from, from McInney would join us, she's the family care coordinator. So if that is something that we might be able to get on the agenda and you're interested in, I think it's going to be a great resource. Parents have definitely indicated, like Beth said, that mental health needs are their, their primary concern about their children, and we're just trying to do whatever we can to support in the best way possible. So I wanted to share this, so you have it.
I will speak just for me here. I think this is so critical, and I would hope that you would come to us with a proposal that we could stand behind as a school district, because I speak to parents all the time where they say, I can't get my child into anything.
Right.
For months.
Right.
And I think we don't realize just how much our kids have been affected by the past nine years, nine years, five years, and the adults as well.
If I could just elaborate just a little bit on what you're saying, because you're absolutely right. Like I said, on a much smaller scale, I have, I've, I've developed over the course of the years relationships with the pediatricians' offices, and we have talked regularly with consent, of course, from families about students. They have established this protocol, and it's been working in Berkshire Hills District, and they had reached out to us and said, are you interested in, in, you know, making this a more formal thing? You have these, you know, you're already talking on a regular basis. I think we all agree that it could be incredibly helpful, and it goes, it falls into line with our Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, our Mental Health and Social Emotional Learning Grant, which, what Beth was just talking about, about the After School Resource Center that would have counseling support available, you know, the warm line that we've talked about, the fact that we now have two school psychologists, a full-time school psychologist intern, three school adjustment counselors, a consulting school psychologist. We have these people here that are really willing and able to assist, because it's a, it's a dire need, truthfully.
Dennis?
Just a, just a question I have for you. And one of the examples refers to a title of a position called a care coordinator.
Right.
Now, is that strictly a doctor's position, or is that someone who's going to be part of our staff?
The care coordinator, well, there's, there's somebody from the school district, me for now. We're kind of establishing a team and have, through one of our grants, put in a mental health coordinator position, so that person will likely be a part of this. But there's also a care coordinator, like I was mentioning, through each of the pediatricians' offices.
Right.
So that's, those are like the key people that would be talking regularly, and then doctors, of course, they're very busy. But if they need to attend on a case-by-case basis, because we'll be identifying students and then talking with families and getting the consent, then they'll attend the meetings as well.
Jim, did you mention that a woman has potentially some grant money?
Grant facility, I was due to contact you real quick about that.
Yeah, I wonder if this is something that would fit in. This doesn't.
I just wanted to say, Sandy, having been a mental health provider in a school district, this is a wonderful thing. You know, I can't tell you how many times I picked up the phone and the pediatrician at the other side, the other end said, who are you again? You know, to have people who actually know the kid and know that I know the kid too.
Right.
Just makes things much better for the kid, but also the parents know that it's not somebody coming out of the blue and saying things that.
That's right.
They're not, it's not, you know, they're getting caught in the middle between a pediatrician and a psychologist, and we're saying different things. It's just wonderful.
This is funded. There was, this is grant-funded. The Southern Berkshire Community Care Coordination got grant funding for this and has offered us to be a part of it.
Well, if there is something that you want the school committee to do, you will undertake it.
Yeah.
I would love it if you would listen to what they have to say and be, just support it, because I think it could be incredibly helpful. And I will tell you, it does happen, like I said, on a smaller scale already, on a very regular basis.
Great, thank you.
I was thinking. I mean, coordinate it for you and talk about that.
Regarding the coordination.
Yes, sir.
I understand this isn't an actual policy at present. It sounds like this is something that'll be put forward as a proposed policy for us to adopt. But what's, what will be a policy? So what, so what's going to happen here? You guys are going to create this position, and the members of the school team are going to be in communication with the student's doctors about the student?
So there will be one coordinator, I'm here, you're not having to create really a position. And then we would determine if there are key personnel at the school that could be an assist in discussing a student's need, only if the parents have agreed and signed a release or consent for us to share information between the doctors' offices and the school. It won't happen otherwise.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for us?
That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
New business, the vote to approve lateral movements of the new salary schedule effective September 1, 2023, and the list is, let me get to the page, 13A.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And everyone has the list there?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion?
What do these moves mean?
It means that they move laterally on the salary schedule, meaning that they have met all the requirements, they have taken the appropriate coursework, it's been approved, vetted, they've received the appropriate grade, and then they move from Masters 30, they've achieved a CAGS, they've moved from nine credits past their masters to 18 credits past their masters. So that's a move on the salary scale.
So that will change their pay, or?
Yes, it would change their pay.
I'm going to get more.
Okay, any, any other? All right, let's take a vote there.
What is, what is the new going to be? Like, this doesn't have any information.
Because you can go online, and all the salary schedules are there. So, so they, what they do is they file like a whole year ahead of time, right? So we, we can anticipate, when we built the budget, we anticipated that these people were going to move to the next level, the next step. And then we know what that is, because we have a salary schedule that's posted out on the website based on each year. So, so we already know what the M9 number is versus the M18 number, or whatever they've achieved in that timeframe. So that's how, that's how we know that we're not overspending the budget or, you know, any of that. We've already planned for this. Sometimes they don't, you know, they just didn't get a chance to finish, so maybe it'll go into the next time we approve a lateral movement. But we've planned in the event that these people are going to make, are going to complete what they said they were going to do.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then, let's vote. Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, Kim?
Yes.
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 No. And Bonnie, yes. Okay. All right. Approved acceptance of choice pre-kindergarten students, all right? Would you address that first, please?
Well, typically, we have, did you want to? Typically, as Sandy had just mentioned too, if we believe that we're going to have room, we haven't normally done choice per se in pre-K, but depending on whether or not they have a sibling in the district, or we would have space available, including potential students that we know will aid into the program, then we have the ability to accept them. So these, these people have applied, and we are saying that we do have room, so.
So these are entered numbers right now?
All right. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. We have second, June 30. Any further discussion? All right, let's, yes, Carl?
Just a question. Why is this the one item in the agenda that's highlighted in yellow?
Because it's amended, that it was.
Why they amended it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, anytime it's yellow, it shows.
Oh, is that what yellow does? Is it, is it an amended function?
When you see amended, yeah.
Okay.
And maybe go up to the top.
Ah, okay, I see that, sorry.
Okay. Sarah?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes, sir.
Dennis?
Yes.
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 And Bonnie, yes. Okay. Okay. This is a request to change November 16, school committee meeting, and these are the dates. So Beth, you want to walk us through?
So we did our best to plan, but not knowing about the Transcend grant, with the Transcend team is traveling in November, the core team travels in November. So I will be, I don't know where yet, but also whoever's on the core team, so that's some teachers and some central office people. So we only had, I believe, one meeting in November, and also in November is the MAS SMASC conference, so that kind of puts a damper on it. So in, we tried to put a calendar in here with the dates that might be available, they are not Thursdays. So in order to fit a meeting in, it would have to be considered by you to be either the 13th, the 20th, the 21st, the 27th, or the 28th. So we wanted to get that to your attention now as opposed to waiting.
Okay, so if you can put your calendars, yes, Nancy?
Mondays are coming for me, because I won't be in it.
Okay.
We just need to get a form.
Right, exactly. I was about to say, but I don't necessarily have to be there.
There weren't a lot of choices in that.
Can you attend via Zoom?
No, there's a lot of us, and I don't.
No, there's a lot of us and I don't know what we're assigned to. Like, I don't know what's on the schedule, yeah.
I can't commit to anything in a day.
Meaning that she wants to attend the ISU?
Yeah, if I...
Oh, oh, yeah, of course. Oh, I thought you meant me.
Yeah, not me.
You can attend the ISU.
Not you, me.
Of course.
Then anything's pretty open for me, as long as I have the opportunity to attend ISU.
So I think we have one on, what's our...
I didn't write it. In November, we are on the 16th.
And I think that was it, right? Our one before that is what, the...
Is...
September...
26th, October 26th.
So we'd have one on September, oh, sorry, October, October 26th.
All right, so we go from October 26th. And the next one after that is not till the 16th.
So we'd either be asking for...
The 2nd?
No, we can't do any of those because, remember, so the 2nd's only one week away from the last one. The 7th, 8th, and 9th is the MAS, MAS-C. So the only dates available are the ones that I have in the calendar in here with a star on it. So it's either the 13th, the 20th, the 21st, the 27th, or the 28th.
All right, since we're a full house, I, how many can do? Raise your hand if you could do the 13th. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we have seven for the 13th. Tuesday, the 21st. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Who knew the 20th, Dennis, a Monday?
The 20th. One, two, three, four, five. And I can do it, that would be six for the 20th. All right, the 28th. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Tuesday's November 28th.
Okay. So keep your hands up on the 28th, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, and I would be seven.
And then the 20th?
The 28th?
27th.
Okay, 27th, which is another Monday. One, two, three, four, five, and I am six.
That's it.
Okay, so the date most was Tuesday, November 21st.
I don't want to commit to those days.
What, I guess, because I heard you mention Thanksgiving, Dennis, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Right, yeah.
And then people would be, the kids would be... I heard you say it, that's why.
It'll be yours the next day.
Okay, so the, so the 21st is the most and the 13th and the 28th?
Does that change anything for people on the 21st?
Does the 21st cause any changes, Thanksgiving? Does anybody to change? Okay, so that's what you've got.
You want to try first?
That's what we have here. Carl, did you have a comment on that?
Are we supposed to vote on this?
Yeah, we just did.
We did?
We just voted the availability, so now the...
I move that we set that would change the November 16th school committee meeting to Tuesday, November 21st.
Thank you very much. We have a second on that?
Nancy's.
Nancy, okay. All right, Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Dennis?
Yes, if it's later in the day.
Yeah.
It would be like six. Okay.
Pipstein?
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, you've got it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. All right. So this is, and any promises, it's going to be short, is the Rural Aid Bill, and not only aid, but guidelines for rural school districts. And Nancy and I have been getting communication from people, you did too, who are involved. But David did some work on this, so I've asked if he would give us a short presentation. And then Beth has some issues related to it, so we'll hear. That is all.
I did this in my office, but I had done a quick presentation to you back in the spring when this came out, and I did not bring it with me tonight, but, so why don't we just...
Why don't we just have David?
Short, short.
Okay, and thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. I did read through the entire bill, although some of it is complicated. And I'm not a lawyer, so if I have any misunderstandings, please keep all that in mind. One of the key elements here is that it seems like it would apply to us, given the density has to be less than 35 students per square mile. And by math, we were well under that. One of the big things I think is good about this bill, and I don't know how well it would work with us being in progress, but there's a lot of regionalization, effort for regionalization funding. Lawyers would need to weigh in more specifically. But if we're forming a, merging and forming a new district in its essence with the Berkshire Hills, I think a lot of that regionalization aid would probably apply to us. And that includes aid for capital expenses. It would, I think, help to off, I think it would, it would help to offset more costs, which would be good for us in the long run. And even if it doesn't, there is additional funding for, for transportation and other things that have been an issue. Probably the biggest change in this bill would be that there would be a new office created at the state level that would basically be our single point of contact for all things related to this. And there's a provision of ability, would even give them the ability to potentially set alternate standards for, for teachers, specifically sped professionals. And it's not clear that that's all going to be a huge benefit, but having a single office that handles all of the policy, that deals specifically with our needs, seems like it's probably going to be a net benefit to us as a district. I would encourage the committee to create a resolution that we can send to the state expressing our support for the measure, assuming we, of course, vote on such a thing. And that would be a way for us as a district to, to express our approval and to hopefully help move the process along. Because fundamentally, I do think this would be a net benefit to us as a district. But again, keep in mind that I'm, you know, no expert in the law.
I don't know how many other people have read the bill. Smitty is one of the early co-sponsors of it. Barrett also is one of the early co-sponsors. I, we have attached here the bill. I think it's important that we familiarize ourselves because it's not, you know, cut and clear before we take any type of an action of endorsement. But we can, you know, we could always come up with a letter saying we're encouraged here, you know, the things that we like, appropriate funding for rural districts, the recognition that we have different needs. So I think there are things that we could cherry pick out of this bill. Carl, did you get to read it? Did you get to read the bill?
Yes.
Do you have any reaction from a legal perspective?
Not from a legal perspective, but I think it's, I think it's outside the, outside the purview of governance of the school district. I don't think it's an appropriate matter for us to take a position on. We can take, we can individually take positions by writing to Smitty or Tom Barrett or anybody, the chair, the respective chairs of the two houses. But I don't think it's something that school committees should be involved in.
Why do you say that?
It has nothing to do with the governance of this district. It doesn't.
Why do you say that?
Well, I disagree with Carl based upon the fact that, I believe, David, that you've done the homework that basically says we qualify.
Well, again, keep in mind that I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not an expert on this topic. But yes, I believe so. When I did the math, what I came up with is because our district covers approximately 165.2 square miles, this is based on data from Wikipedia, so thank you for what it is, we are under 2K, we are under 2K students, I believe, total, which gives us a somewhat less than 12 students per square mile, if all of my numbers are accurate, which I'm not in a position to make any guarantees on.
So Dennis, do you...
Well, yeah, I mean, I read this in depth. And basically, it looked like a very good financial thing for us, you know, as a, as a district, you know, if we qualify, okay? I mean, I didn't do any of your homework, you know, on whether or not we qualify or not. But if, if we do qualify for this...
We do qualify.
From my reading it as, as basically what's it do for us financially, it looks like it's a very good deal, you know?
I agree, that's why I'm...
My opinion.
I agree, that's why I'm recommending that we should take a position on this. The, there's another district that has essentially sent us information about this. And one of the things they have is they have a model resolution that would need some customization and adjustment to our district-specific needs. But this person is obviously very much for this, as, as I am. I guess I don't understand Carl's concern about it not having anything to do with the governance of the district. Like, this has everything to do with the governance of this. This is, this bill would define our relationship with the state as a district.
Nancy?
One is a question and one is a comment. This, if I'm, if I have this right, there were a whole bunch of us that, at the school committee conference, that this conversation came up, that's who we got the, to create a, to create a subcommittee or a group that were focused on this particular rural funding, basically, and becoming voices. And that's, that was where that, that email came from. So that's number one. My question is practically speaking, oftentimes with numbers of lists, like numbers in lists of people, like if they're looking at, what are we, say, nine minus one? Whatever. But are we more effective as a voice, as a school committee, in support of the, of the, of the change in the law? Or are we more effective as individuals presenting our opinion?
Well...
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
That's obviously a matter of opinion, by and large. I think it would be most effective if we expressed our opinions both as individuals and as a district collectively, because those are not the same thing, you know? We can opine as a district, as a committee, and we can opine individually. And I think we're going to have the most impact if we do both.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion. I am more than happy to call Smitty and ask him, what is the most, if we are in favor of this, what is the best way for us to support this bill? Do we do it as individuals? Is it more powerful, since you are one of the early vote signers, if it were to be a school committee vote? So I'd be more than happy to do that if the committee wants me to do so.
Let me make a motion. We're asking you to contact Smitty and determine the most, the best way for us to support this bill.
Is there a second on that, Nancy? Okay, you wanted to make a comment before we get into that?
Yes. Isn't the fact that if we sit there and we agree to this and stuff like that with the rural things, the idea is it helps our district get more funding? No? It doesn't?
It's, but...
Defining our, our needs and stuff like that?
So this is a very complex piece of legislation. I think that people are kind of commingling it with the rural aid stuff that's already even out there. So I think it would behoove us to look at each piece and see if we're in favor of the whole thing. I am not in favor of every piece of this. So, and I think that we could talk about why. Smitty, who was in my office, probably getting in summer or whatever, talked about the fact that, yes, we qualify by the definition of distance, but there is a, another part of the funding formula that has an income factor in it. And he suggested that we, we speak with, he gave me the name.
We've got to put it down, right?
But to talk to them about the actual formula, because there have been years we have qualified and years we haven't qualified. I don't think we should lock ourselves into a blanket okay of this until we have really ripped it apart. And so he wanted, he asked that I make that contact outreach, which I'm going to do, and see if we can get that piece taken out. So I just don't want us doing a blanket yes to this. I'm not sure that it is in our best interest to say yes to everything in here. I think we want to dissect it.
I agree, because when I was going through it, I'm like, there's some things I think are great, some things...
Does anybody know the statewide, at the average statewide per capita income?
Yeah, right, so you don't want that.
I don't even know that. Does anybody know that?
Well, Berkshire County is like 64 or something like that. By town, it's...
By town, wait, let's not cross the conference. Yeah.
So by town, one of the issues is that by township, it's determined by, we haven't quite figured what. But according to the town, or to the state map, the average income in New Marlborough is $100,000 per capita.
I mean, that's got to be pretty high.
Yeah, I think. And it's not a change... In terms of, in terms of, in terms of local resident, in terms of resident income, it's not even... Just saying, so town by town, when you look at the maps, it is...
One of the things that's...
And that's one of the things that they're determining, what makes you eligible and what makes a district eligible.
One of the things that struck me is that this office that they're talking about establishing would take over a lot of the things that I don't think we necessarily want to be taken over, you know, that we want. Are we giving, are we going to be giving up things that we, as a district, don't want to give up? And turning it over takes the control. And remember, what may be true for us may be diametrically opposed in Barnstable. So it's, it requires some more examination. Nancy?
I think they are to the point that David's making, though I think so many things do, are appealing that to do the, to do the currying. I think curry combing, the spreading out and sort of parsing out, I think is a good idea. And kind of look at what works and what doesn't work. And just kind of get, I think that would also be something that we probably should be doing anyway as members of the school committee and to sound on the Barnstable points.
And also, I'm pretty sure Smitty...
It's good to hear different, different ideas and different, different voices.
Smitty will have a quiet person that we could work with, you know, on this piece of legislation. Yes, David?
I certainly think that, I think I agree with pretty much everyone here, that it makes sense to have more information and more detailed information. I looked at, again, basic information that's publicly available on the internet and did some quick averaging. There is no guarantee that those numbers are accurate based on the state's formulation or even that they're reported accurately. So I think having that stuff analyzed much more thoroughly according to the model that the state is going to use or is using is a worthwhile thing to do. Certainly, in any bill, in any change to the law, there's always things that you're going to give up and things that you're going to get. The big advantage to me in this is that we would have a single office that deals with all issues really specific related to a district. And these things would not be subject to appropriation by the legislature. Whereas now, if we need anything, we have to get a special act of legislature in this... Whereas now, if we need anything, we have to get a special act of legislature, and it's this monumental undertaking. We'd have a single office that would deal with all the little, all the things we need. That would, that seems to me would greatly streamline the process. And even if we don't get everything that we want out of it, that seems like a net benefit in itself.
I would argue that we do have a regional contact already. I mean, she's technically retired, but they do have a regional person already at Dussie that this, even our planning board group has been working with. So I don't know that we need to add any more layers of that. But I do think, and I've been saying this all along, that advocacy and what you're saying, subject to appropriation, language needs to come right the heck out of it, as it does with Chapter 70. I think it should be a line item on the budget, says, "Chapter 70 Rural Aid. It needs to be funded at the appropriate level, which is at least 60, 61 million." And those are the things we should be advocating for, because we'd be having a lot less of these other conversations if we were accurately funded.
So right now, we have a motion on the floor, and which is for me to contact Smitty's office, see if there's any update, if he has a point person. And I totally agree with Beth in terms of, there are definitely things in here that would not benefit us. And unfortunately, Carl, you've got a community that's too wealthy.
My community is wealthy?
Yes.
Yeah, us too. Us too.
You're in Monterey also.
Yeah, you're in the same position that we are in Marlboro.
You're too rich.
Well.
Except you, Carl.
Except we're not.
I just thought it might be interesting to know that, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the Berkshire County town with the highest per capita income is Sheffield.
Get out of here.
Yeah, that's why I say, when you look at the maps, they're insane. I mean, they just don't make sense.
I don't think it's the income, it was a factor, there was, they have some funky formula, and it was offered that was originally causing us to not qualify.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Steve Reagan and I ripped it apart.
Okay.
Every 10 years.
However, it doesn't, we want to get that out period, I think, it doesn't serve.
All right, so let's quickly, for the sake of time, if you want me to contact, find and find out if there's a point person. That's what the motion is, all right?
Who seconded the motion?
I did.
Oh, okay. Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, and I'm a yes. I will do that, hopefully tomorrow. Exactly. We don't want to say that out loud.
He's getting, he's getting to know us really well.
Okay, and David, thank you again for bringing this up and the, and the work associated with it. Moving along. Unfinished business, oh, we always have unfinished business. I think we dealt with that. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Subcommittee reports, finance?
No updates.
Community relations, public advocacy. Nancy, go to it.
Oh, God. Update, we had a meeting just prior to the regular schools committee this evening, and a couple of things came up, and the first being that we would like to present to the committee, the past school committee, got me doing it now, September 27th, as a day that we have a community outreach, community conversation scheduled to take place regarding the regional merger and questions that are coming up with it. We had a member of the community ask that we do make it an opportunity or create an opportunity for a detailed, in essence, variations on a theme of a line-by-line follow-through of the agreement, so that people know exactly what's, what's in the agreement. There was also, too, we had had discussion with the, must have been the last school committee meeting, we voted to approve the idea of, again, doing the same thing for the finances. I, that's basically, that's it. I think we need to, I guess we're going to ask to present to you guys to approve September 27th as a date for the approval. Technically, we also, yeah, there's, yeah, we'll leave it at that. You've gotten the rest of the information?
So the motion basically is that it would be another one of the superintendent's community outreach. We did three of them last academic year. This is rolling out the first one of this year, and it would be co-sponsored by the school committee, and it would be totally on the regional agreement.
And open to all eight towns, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So do you, Sarah, do you want to read it, since you wrote it?
You want to read it? That's your note.
So the Community Relations and Public Schools Advocacy Subcommittee recommends to the full school committee that we agree to host a community conversation, inviting everyone from all eight towns on September 27th to discuss and go over the regional agreement.
I second that motion.
See none. Let you begin, Sarah.
On the vote?
Yes.
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 Epstein? And I'm a yes.
I suppose we should probably discuss some time.
We'll use the usual time we do.
We'll second it, we'll say.
Yeah.
I think the last one we did was seven, yeah.
I think seven works.
I think we should probably do have the timing.
Seven o'clock. And also, we're inviting all eight towns, TACPAC 27, community conversation. I will, obviously, out of courtesy, right, I will let Lucy Prashner know that we have selected this date and that we are doing this event, the 27th, in the TACPAC for all eight towns. Okay. Back to you, there was a second motion. Ready?
The second motion was regarding creation of, again, I believe this is specifically regarding the merger, to create a frequently asked questions page. Access, I believe Sarah recommended, maybe on the homepage. We already have a list of frequently asked questions that have come from, that have come from the public meetings that we've had, and some of them have been apparently found or taken from the, or have been taken from videos of the, of the public meetings. We also, the last one, we had people submitted cards, questions on index cards, so that we had actually concrete, concrete copies of the questions that were being asked. The questions were then answered by various and sundry members of our school community, including council. Is this correct?
I reviewed some of them.
Yeah, as well as, I mean, you probably could give me the list better than I can, Beth, of who covered these and answered these.
Well, we've had a couple of people work on them. I think they need some additional work before we post them out there, but we either took them right from responses that were given in the meeting, or, you know, we've looked up the information that we need, whatever it is, so I have to, I'm going to have to go over them again. But I wanted all of you to just weigh in and feel like if we've invited people to community conversations, we should answer their questions and put them somewhere, so that's what we're asking of the committee to.
To present.
And you will know everybody is going to receive the FAQs.
Correct.
As, as Carl pointed out, you will be the disseminator.
We'll make sure that Lynette sends out where, where we currently are, and then everybody could, you know, weigh in.
Again, the Community Relations and Public Schools Advocacy Subcommittee recommends to the full school committee that the FAQs from our past community conversations be posted and be available on the homepage of our website, with the hope that it will become an open and rolling question-and-answer page. Our superintendent and principals will include this information in their weekly emails to inform families and make them aware that it exists and where they can find it.
And it doesn't mean everything will be on the homepage, but you click on the homepage, it will send you to. Okay. Do we have a second to that motion? All right, Kim, any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Nancy?
Yes.
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 And me, yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else for us?
That is it.
Wonderful. What about our good old policy subcommittee?
We have not had a meeting lately.
We have one soon.
Okay.
Okay. Personnel and negotiations. We don't really have anything there. Beth's been working on it. All right.
No, we haven't, but I think we'll talk to that.
Yeah.
Does that, do you have ideas when you're ready to go send it's out to us?
Yeah, I'll figure that out, send it out.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Superintendent's evaluation. Yeah, but I think we should try to do that earlier in the year.
Yes, we actually, there are plans twice.
All right, executive minutes review. We don't have anything, right, Carl?
There are no minutes of executive session that are currently ripe for review.
Thank you, sir. Curriculum Subcommittee, we haven't met.
That also should be done earlier in the year. Our early childhood, nothing at the moment.
And the Southern Berkshire Childcare, nope. And the Regional Agreement Review Subcommittee, we're not doing that until after we know what's happening with the big guys. All right, future agenda items. All right. Anyone have anything else that they want to add to that shopping list of future agenda items? Okay. Guess what?
Motion rejected.
Thank you, Carl.
Second.
I heard Kim first on that. Seeing no objections, we are adjourned. 7:53, whoa.